Who's missing in terms of members apart from Jonathan? Margaret, Dan, Pete. Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, let's go. Let's start. Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, we've gone live. Thank you, Carl. We're ready to go.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Children and Young Scrutiny Committee. Helen, do have some apologies, please.
Councillor Chilvers is unavailable today. I haven't had any other apologies at this point.
Okay, thank you. Members disclosures of peculiary or non-peculiary interests? Do speak up. No? The minutes of the previous meeting from the 29th of September. Anyone like to raise anything on true and accurate record? Okay. Public speaking. Do we have any public speakers today, Helen?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Question time. Do we have any questions from members to cabinet members? No?
No.
Are there any updates from officers who are in the meeting? Okay. On to item four then, which is the Send and Inclusion Change Programme, and over to Ross calls. Ross.
Hi, Youssef. Thank you. If I can, if I can get the technology to work, I'd like to start with about a four-minute video on the Send Inclusion Change Programme. So I'll just load that up now. In Warwickshire, we want all our children and young people to lead a fulfilling life and be part of their community. Since 2014, 59 early-year settings have achieved the Warwickshire Inclusion Kite Marketing Scheme, Winks Award, providing more support for children with SEND in local early-year settings. We have improved our timelines of issuing EHC plans from 29% to 88% within 20 weeks. For our children and young people with SEND consistently achieve above the national average. We have worked across education, health and social care to reduce the number of our children being admitted to inpatient settings for mental health needs. We have offered over 100 supported internships for our young people with SEND in the last three years. However, outcomes for our children and young people with SEND have been getting worse. Only 42% of our school-aged children with EHC plans attend mainstream settings, only 38% at secondary age. The number of EHC plans has risen from 2,781 in September 2014 to 4,299 in January 2020. The demand for services continues to rise due to local population growth and growing complexity of needs. We are spending well above our allocated budget and the current system is financially unsustainable. In Warwickshire, we need to introduce a whole system change. We must focus on promoting inclusion in mainstream settings, giving schools the skills and resources to meet the needs of learners in their local schools, and building the confidence of parents and carers. We must invest in essential resources to meet demand and provide better value for money whilst continuing to provide our statutory services. Through the SEND and Inclusion Change Programme, we will work together to improve outcomes for our children and young people with SEND, take decisions in a clear, fair and transparent way, ensure that systems are sustainable so that we are working within our allocated funding. Our plan for change: Autumn 2020. Start the trial projects on changing the conversation and child-centred inclusion pathways. Introduce a quality assurance framework for EHC plans. Implement changes to panel processes and develop new local SEND guidance to schools. Adopt new processes for ensuring our children receive their educational entitlement. Spring 2021. Work with contact to reconstitute the parent carer forum. Relaunch the local offer website. Summer 2021. Introduce new arrangements for commissioning alternative provision. Increase the number of children aged 0 to 3 with EHC plans. Evaluate trial projects for impact and potential rollout. Deliver positive educational outcomes for our children and young people with SEND. Autumn 2021 and beyond. Open a new special school and multi-agency provision on the Pairs site. Increase the number of supported internships being offered and the number of our young people with SEND moving into employment. Increase the proportion of our school-aged children with EHC plans in mainstream settings. Establish more specialist resource provision or bases in mainstream settings. Children and young people with SEND are our children. We want to change the conversation so that we can focus on how we can support our children and young people where they are, enable them to progress and celebrate their achievements. The more we can do to channel resources into early identification and intervention in our mainstream schools, the better the outcomes we can achieve for our children and young people, and the more financially sustainable we will be. So hopefully you were all able to hear that and the technology worked. That's an opening animation that we've put together to just broadly show what the Send Inclusion Change Programme aims to achieve. And that's something that we launched, we showed for the first time at our Head Teachers Conference last Wednesday, when we launched the programme with heads last week. In terms of the paper that's presented today, you'll be aware of it, papers back in June and July, which set out the proposals for the Send Inclusion Change Programme and the projects that we wish to do. So this provides an update on what we've got in the last few months. The first piece of work have really been foundational. So some of the work has been behind the scenes, recruiting project managers, developing our performance dashboard and so forth. But a number of the projects have got going. In a number of cases, they're in early stages. But just to mention in the report, some of those, so one of the first things we've been looking at is, is children not in a school role? An issue that we have and making sure that our children are in a school role and are receiving their educational entitlement, and reviewing our processes and how we work in order to make sure that that happens, and particularly looking at our monitoring as well, to make sure that is up to date, children aren't left without school role for months at a time, and that we are able to have those conversations and intervene as soon as we know that that's the case. Other projects I mentioned, the Quality Assurance Framework for our EHC plans in terms of making sure that our plans are of the best quality. I mentioned on there as well, the project to develop a new special school at the Pairs site, which will be coming back in November to have a further discussion at ONS regarding that project.
Ross, how many children are off the roll at the moment? Do we know?
I can't give you the full number. In terms of those with an EHC plan, it's 16 who aren't in a school role at the moment. That's our latest data. It is more than that without an EHC plan, but I don't have those figures to hand. Well, broadly, just some of the other things that we're doing, again, some of these are starting up, but we will be reviewing our services that are funded from the Dedicated Schools Grant. We're looking very much from a system point of view, how those services work in terms of the wider system. Where are the incentives? Are they helping young children to be back in school and to improve outcomes? There's some work that we're doing just around our financial systems, making sure that we're reporting accurately, and we are reconstituting our parent carer forum as well. Also to note that Cabinet, although we haven't got going with the new project around resource provision, the existing plans for extending resource provision, these are kind of specialist units in mainstream schools, approvals for those units at the Paddocks Primary and Rugby, at Henley Primary School were approved by Cabinet in the last couple of months as well. So those capital projects continue. To bring to the committee's attention as well, in terms of national funding, I think only a week or so after the previous ONS committee, there was a new announcement regarding schools funding, but there was also an announcement regarding high-needs funding at the same time. The result of that is, roughly speaking, that from 2021, 22 onwards, we have about £4 million more allocated than we expected roughly, which is shown in the graph in the paper. Obviously, there are a number of factors that went into that, but I think we'd like to thank members in terms of making representations nationally as well, along with other local authorities and the local government association. That reduces the size of the gap, but there is still going to be a gap and certainly still a need for our programme. Two things which aren't in the paper, just to bring your attention to as well as a committee. The first one is, another way we're looking to reduce the gap is a discussion with our Schools Forum regarding the possible 0.5% of the Schools Block budget which can be moved over to the High Needs Block. We started a consultation on Friday regarding that, so we're currently out consultation, asking schools for their views. Because there was some unallocated funding from the Schools Block this year, we are able to do that without affecting the National Funding Formula allocations to schools. So that consultation is underway, and there will be a meeting on November the 19th, an extraordinary meeting of the Schools Forum to discuss the feedback to that. Finally, other discussions have been going on regarding making sure that members are able to closely monitor how this programme progresses. So we have a series of members' briefings in place starting next month, but we've also agreed to put in a task and finish group, particularly to kind of provide additional assurance for members and get into a bit more detail in those sessions regarding the programme, but also to see where members can add further value as well to the programme in their roles as elected members. If I stop there with kind of the overview of the paper and where we are, Youssef, I'm happy to open up questions.
Brilliant. Thank you, Ross. Colin?
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to be called quite so quick. I hadn't got all my boxes ticked. I think that's a very fair presentation by Ross of a complex and difficult situation for us all. It isn't just a matter of resources. Resources are scarce and they have to be used as effectively as we can. And as Ross has highlighted, there's an increase in numbers of SEND children and in the complexity of their cases. But one of the things that came out from the Head Teachers Conference that Ross might want to comment on is our guest speaker there, raised the question as to whether the increasing amounts of money that we're spending on some children was actually reflected in substantially better outcomes for them or not. We need to be looking at the effectiveness of some of the money that we spend on children in terms of the outcomes that are going to be achieved from it. And there is this challenge of convincing head teachers and indeed parents that mainstream schools can cope with children with increasingly complex SED needs, particularly in the light of some of the deficit situations that is being picked up in the second paper to be considered by this committee later on this morning. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Howard?
Thank you, Chair. I want to build on what Colin was just saying. In the report, it says that we're promoting inclusion in mainstream settings and giving schools the skills and resources to meet the needs of the learners. How much training are we going to give the rank-and-file teacher within the schools? And how enthusiastic are the mainstream schools in having, if you like, students with difficult needs coming into their classrooms?
Okay, Ross, thank you. In terms of the training, obviously, training is offered at the moment as a traded service. There will be training. It won't be overnight in terms of getting the resources into schools and getting kind of training and upskilling into schools. One of the projects is to look at that, to agree what type of training, and we'll get into that. There are different types of needs in each school and the training requirements may differ, but I do think we need a better joined-up approach. So whether that's around attachment training or trauma training or autism awareness training, there's a whole range of training, and there are different approaches to it, which we need to agree what that looks like. I think in terms of what a good SEND system looks like, it does come down to what we call kind of quality-first teaching. And so it isn't just about training up the ASCO, it is about training the whole school and the whole workforce. And in our most inclusive schools, that's what we see. And indeed, when we've done training around, which has been provided free, the Autism Education Trust training, for example, that is whole-school training. When we train whole schools at a time, it's not just kind of inviting one representative of the school. Most of our schools and our teachers want to do the right thing for our young people with SEND. The reasons for seeing the increase in the use of specialist provisional alternative provision are covered in national reports, and I won't go into them all again now, but a lot of it is, there has been a financial pressure on schools over the last few years, which have created tensions in the system in that way. So the conversations we were having with head teachers, for example, at the Head Teacher Conference and kind of offline in our own forums, it is about, they do need those resources and then they need upskilling and they want to be doing the right thing in this regard, but they don't always feel in a place to do so. And that's where we come into the changing the conversation project as well, which is going to be a wider kind of conversation with schools that will be piloted first. And that change in conversation is trying to change it from almost going straight away, when things can begin to get difficult to say, how do we move from, is the placement right, to saying, have we got the support package right? And Dwayne Chapel, who's my manager, who sends her apologies for today, I thought she can't be here, but she said quite strongly to head teachers last week when I was about the question about being school-ready, she said, the question shouldn't be, are the children ready for school? Are the schools ready for the children that they're bringing in? This isn't going to be something which is going to be turned around, you know, by the next time I report. But it is about changing, you know, we have projects set up to change the conversation. And perhaps just before bringing the next question, just as an example perhaps of that as well, one of the really good examples we've got just from some new working in the last few months is our exclusions team and our SENDR team working together at a local school. An exclusion was made. We quickly kind of went in and spoke to the school, both the SEN team and the kind of exclusions team working for the first time really together. We talked with the school, what would it need and what would need to happen to support that child in that school? The exclusion was rescinded and a package has been put in place. That child continues in that school with more support in place. Now, I wouldn't hope going forward that we would need an exclusion to trigger that, but I guess I use that as an example to say that there's an outcome where we have helped one young person to just to stay in school, and where we need to move to is to make sure that that happens before we even get to that trigger point.
Okay. Corinne?
Yeah, thank you. Some of my questions are going to be similar to Howard's really, in the sense of training for staff in schools. I'm really glad to see that you've said that the EHCP plans for younger children would hopefully be increased. I think, speaking to a nursery school recently, one of their issues was that they might identify a need in a young child, you know, two, three-year-old, but by the time they got to sort out an EHCP for that child, they'd normally moved on to school. So the nurseries were often the ones that were missing out on the funding and the extra help. So I think that's reassuring. But also looking at it from the point of view of a parent, I think if my child was going into mainstream school, one of my concerns would be, is this school going to be willing to make the changes that they need to support my child? And I know recently, not myself, but one of my Labour colleagues had had contact from a school in the south of the county that had had some SEND children starting and felt very concerned about their ability to sort of support those increasing needs, I guess. And I think it's kind of a little bit worrying that maybe the training is optional for things. And I would like to see that eventually that kind of thing became a mandatory service so that all schools and all teachers had to have autism training and the attachment training and all those kind of things. So that, you know, we're not looking at SEND children as being different or separate, but we're, as you say, inclusive and that we're actually seeing it as a normal part of every classroom. So I would want sort of reassurances as a parent that that was going to happen. And also, if it doesn't happen, how are you going to monitor that? So how are the, you know, the council going to know if there's all these kids out there that are actually not being supported? Thank you.
Thanks, Corinne. So in terms of the nursery, kind of EHC plans at nursery, just to explain that project. So we know that some children due to, particularly if they have life-limiting conditions or other conditions of that type, will require support earlier. Our policy so far, a kind of policy with a small p, has been, it has been to develop the evidence and present the evidence, and usually we've been issuing EHC plans in the year just before school in reception year. As you say, some nurseries have found that particularly difficult. We have actually put, that we've seen as an investor save, so we think in terms of, by issuing more EHC plans, particularly the age 0 to 3, yes, there'll be an initial outlay in terms of there will be more. We will actually be spending more, in terms of there'll be more EHC plans in the system or at an earlier stage. But we do think that actually by having that planning in place, we think there'll be less children who require a special school place with EHC plans in reception year. And as a result, we think there'll be a saving in the system as we go forward through better planning, preparing for that mainstream environment when we get to reception year. In terms of the training, I think there's an item on later on with Health Overview and Scrutiny regarding the autism strategy, which talks about our training as well and what's a kind of a whole-school approach and what isn't. As I said, as I said to Councillor Roberts, in terms of that training right and what we're going to do, we haven't agreed on what that looks like yet. That will come later in this kind of academic year, but it is clearly key for us in terms of getting that training right. The trading issue came up in the Empower review that we had, so the review by an external company called Empower. Trading was one of the issues that was raised. Now, this is tricky for us in some ways because you don't just want to move money around the system. Somebody still has to pay for the trainer and so forth, but we are, that is something that we want to change. Where's it right? Where's it right that the school should be buying extra support? But actually, where's it a disincentive in the system in terms of not just buying in training, but buying in education psychology support, buying in specialist teaching support? What should the core offer of the local authority be? And that will also come out through our service reviews, which we are starting this term as well, when we're looking at the services that we provide. And when I say kind of looking at system change, it's not just looking at those services to say, are they providing a good service or not? It's to say, in the wider system, actually, are they providing incentives or disincentives to schools? Are they supporting schools or actually are they ended up, perhaps unintentionally, as a route to come out of school? In terms of the support that they provide, almost we're picking up failures in the system, but actually addressing those failures. In terms of, sorry to hear, in terms of negative experiences going into reception. Our plan goes, our plan call natures, who oversee the EHC plans, are working closely with our schools. Again, where schools buy into our services at the moment, obviously, we have an understanding of where schools are at, and we do have a schools causing concern process where when we hear really negative things from regarding practice, it is taken there and we escalate it to a higher level. We work across education to do that, and we will raise it with the school in terms of challenging it. At an individual level, we can do that when the child has an EHC plan with a plan coordinator as well. I won't go into that, but we do have those conversations. That's not to say not all of those conversations reach back to us. And I think one of the things that we want to do, and again, this is long-term change that we're looking at, but when we're talking about changing the conversation and there's another project in there which is about school-to-school support. I think one of the things we can really be proud of as an education system in Warwickshire is our peer-to-peer support when it comes to school improvement, in terms of kind of improving our educational attainment and progress. We've got really good systems in place with head teachers challenging each other and trying to support each other as well with our teaching schools and so forth. I don't think that extends at the moment to the area of SEND. I don't think we do see challenge between schools on SEND or trying to raise the standards on SEND. We see some fabulous, really inclusive schools, and we see others who aren't. And we don't see challenge between the two in that way. So one of the things we need to change over the next kind of year to two, two years, is not just changing the conversation between ourselves as a council and schools, it's between schools themselves and getting that peer-to-peer support. But just to give a kind of, I guess, a positive view on that, I mean, if I look at the, in the Nunn Eton and Bedworth area, just as an example of something that we would want to look at kind of following the model that's been developed there, Oakwood School have set up their own kind of partnership with the ASCOs in their area. We have begun to see a decline in some of the EHC requests, sorry, in some of the requests for specialist provision in that area from the special school, working really closely with some of the mainstream schools, particularly the primary schools and some really good practice happening there. So this isn't to say it's happening across the piece, and it's not to say that it's not an issue we can't tackle, but it is about changing that culture of how we work. And that won't just be local authority to schools, that will also need school-to-school conversations to change.
Okay, thank you. Margaret and then Dominic.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks very much. Well, first of all, I'm very pleased to see this paper here because I think it's something we really need to focus on. I'd like to just support what Corinne said about this really should be for all teachers. And I think we need to get schools to see that all children are on a spectrum, sorry to use that word because I know it's used in other contexts, but of how much support they need and the type of support they need. And all children should be looked at in that way, in a different way. There is a point where they might need external help, but I think we've got to push that line further and further along so that they can do more and more inside the school. And so I was rather concerned when I heard you say that training was a traded service because there must be some training that all teachers should have, and how that's funded obviously is something that needs to be considered. But the one thing I was disappointed at in the paper was the lack of actual data. I mean, we were told that, you know, the number of children seeking support is increasing, but we haven't got figures for that. And I would like to see that. And going back to what Colin said, we need to know what works. I mean, how can we have a strategy if we don't know what's worked so far and what the I mean, how can we have a strategy if we don't know what's worked so far and which interventions have had the biggest impact? And that's the sort of data that we need to see, you know, that you've talked about some, Ross, which is really encouraging, some things that have worked really well. Well, that would be great to see. These are the things we know work, and this is how they work and the impact they have. And when it comes to the strategy at the end that we've got there, there's no targets, there's no, and this is how we're going to measure whether it's succeeded. And this is how we'll judge whether we're going to take these things forward. And it will, in terms of impacting on the amount of specialist support, you know, this will reduce the amount that's needed if we put this in early. So it's those, that sort of information that we need, it's a bit too general, the paper, doesn't actually tell us, you know, what would happen. Sorry, I've got lots of building work going on in the background, so you've got background noise. But anyway, so that's my view. It's, you know, it's a good start, but we need that data. And I'd like to see it come back with some real specific data about what works.
If I go, so part of the word, part of the judgment has been difficult to know what data to share and not to share. It's been a conversation we've been having with the Chair of the Schools Forum as well. I mean, I feel that's an area which the Task and Finish Group can really get into to say, to be really clear about what's wanted to share or not. There is plentiful data there, and we have to be kind of careful in how we interpret some of it as well, because there are lots of, there are some caveats around how you read some of that data. And the performance dashboard is one of the first things we've been looking at to look at those trends. And we have been doing work in the background to match up with each project. How are we going to, how are we going to measure that? So what's the performance indicator? What's the baseline that we have? And we've been baselining, in truth, because a number of projects haven't really got going in full swing yet. We know that we can't kind of show the impact that's been made as of yet. But certainly, that is the intention, that both financially, we can show what we're spending, but also we can look at the activity, what the numbers are indeed, where applicable, what the outcomes are. So I think that's an area for the Task and Finish Group to really get into and come back to, because it's not, it's not that there's a lack of data, it's how we present that and how we, how we show that and the areas which members really want to look at as well. Forgive me, I paused for a minute. There was another point I think I needed to come back to, Margaret.
You're on mute, Margaret.
Yeah, it was the training and whether, you know, whether it would be economically efficient, really, to give more training free, to make sure the schools were more self-efficient.
And I think there's definitely a return on investment case. And we do that. So again, I would mention again, the Autumn Education Trust training, which we've rolled out to over 100 schools, I think, which have had that training. But of course, we have 240 schools or just roundabouts, that's still 140 schools who haven't had that as well. And whenever we've done this, it hasn't necessarily been mandatory training, it's been offered. And it's those who have taken it up. It does come back to quality first, teaching. I would say nationally, there's an issue as well in terms of our teacher training really doesn't include enough time on SEND. That's not something we could influence whilst, actually, some of our staff do join with local programs on their kind of SEND days, if you like, but we know in terms of coming into teaching, it's not, it's not in the national training on the PGCEs as much as we would like from our perspective. But this is about training in the class. If you don't get it right in the classroom, then the SEND Co is always fighting a losing battle. I think the reason why, in terms of saying exactly what we're going to do, one, because we want a wider group to look at that and agree exactly what that should look like. And there are different approaches as well. So, for example, I'm quite aware that Coventry used some funding to back the Thrive approach in schools. Now, the Thrive approach has different views from people that I speak to. Some see it as a very expensive approach, others see it as it's completely reformed how their school works. They both feel the school is more inclusive, but also they feel they spend less time firefighting in meetings, that they do have an approach which actually is able to take them forward, is more inclusive, and their annual reviews and things like that are less confrontational and taken forward. At some point, we will need to, well, not at some point, within the next kind of six, six to nine months, we'll need to take a decision in terms of what that actually looks like in terms of, are we going to go forward with that or not? But we want, you know, I'm quite aware of colleagues and different views of head teachers on that. And we want to, in order to take everyone with us, we want to get that agreement before we go forward with it. But we know there are those approaches out there.
Dominic.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Ross, for your video presentation. I thought it was pretty slick. And I've just got a couple of questions, really. What kind of feedback have you had at this kind of early stage from headteachers since you've shared this with them? And what kind of plans have you got to engage with our headteachers and our teaching staff to help inform this process going forward? Because I think their opinions really, really matter, which is obvious. I'm just interested in to hear how you're going to incorporate some of those ideas that might come forward.
Thanks. So I guess, in terms of the Headteacher Conference where we launched this, and I say we're speaking to heads all the time in between, as well on various groups, I would say there were two camps, kind of one who were kind of great, let's go for it, when do we start, want to get going with this. And I know that Dwayne had a number of emails from very positive heads who wanted to be involved and support us with this. In truth, others were perhaps more defensive, and understandably so, but kind of pointing to other parts of the system where they felt they kind of let down, and we needed to solve the problem somewhere else first. And I think it's, I guess I would respond to that by saying, you know, some of those areas in terms of joint working, yes, we can improve on, but actually, we still need to change how we're working in our schools as well. In terms of how we go forward, working with heads, we intend to do that more on a project-by-project basis, in terms of kind of, if you like, in the room, having discussions about how we go forward. So we haven't convened all of those kind of project groups yet, but that's where we'd want them to be. We get regular feedback from the Schools Forum, we'll give a regular drip of communication through our Heads Up newsletter, and we don't just have kind of terminally conferences, but our other kind of channels with headteachers as well. So it will be a mixture of all of those things. And I guess we are looking, when we, for example, some of those trial projects which we haven't got going with yet, but one of those is to work, we'll think it's three consortium of schools, and that'll be very much engaging with all the heads in that area, saying, okay, how do we work here? So there are some which are far more schools-based, some are more kind of behind-the-scenes and administration-based, and it'll be on a project-by-project approach in terms of engaging heads, kind of completely around the table, if you like.
Okay. Thanks, Ross.
Hello, can you hear me? You might not be able to see me, I've got poor wifi this morning. Just really like to, first of all, reiterate Margaret's points. Thanks, Ross, it's a really good overview, but I really think we need a little bit more detail and more data explaining. And I wouldn't like to leave it all to the Task and Finish Group. I think we need to have some of it brought to us. You know, as you come up with the data, we need to have a look at it here to scrutinize. The other thing is, I think there's five projects on here that haven't got going yet. And I'd like to know a little bit more about those and what are the problems with actually setting them in progress. Because I think you've got five identified that haven't got off the ground.
Well, in terms of the data, I think the Task and Finish Group, I believe the intention is to work, I think the meetings of the overview and scrutiny, the next one is November, I understand, and then February. And I think the intention is for the Task and Finish Group to bring back recommendations to that February group. And I would suggest, as part of that, a recommendation could be that this is the data that we want presented at regular intervals to overview scrutiny. So that's not to say, leave it with the Task and Finish Group and never bring it back to the full committee, it's to say, the Task and Finish Group can really help us in identifying what should be brought back to the committee and what shouldn't be. I present to a sending inclusion partnership, which currently feeds back on 43 different data indicators. And in terms of what we present, it'd be good to get some guidance on that. In terms of the projects that we haven't got going with yet, there's more than just the five, Pam, there's the phase two and phase three ones. In terms of, when we looked at all the kind of the 31 projects, there was a good argument for putting all of them first. And in terms of, I guess we have to manage what's the priority, what is dependent on other things. So, for example, establishing the, reconstituting our parent care forum is key to making sure we have a parent voice running through this program. And that's one of the first things that we need to do. Making sure we have accurate financial forecasting was kind of a back office activity. If we're not, I think last year to the Schools Forum, at one point, we predicted a £4 million overspend, and by the end of the year, it was £7 million. That shows we really need to improve what our forecasting systems look like and how we're reporting the data we're using going into that. So that's, some of the projects we've done on, we need this as a foundation, that's why we've prioritized them. The children not on a school role is just an urgent problem that we need to address. That's not savings-related, that's just making sure that we do the right thing and deliver our statutory duties. Other projects are obviously, one of the drivers for this is the financial deficit that we're in. So we need to get going with some of them. Hence, the Pairs Project is well advanced, although the resource provision for its next phase hasn't started. Obviously, we're continuing with opening up those places as well. In terms of, we've been, since July as well, and the funding was approved, there's been recruitment of project managers, there's been a small delay to recruiting some of the wider kind of SEND team as well that will support this. But I think we're confident that we can begin to move at pace, particularly through that first cohort of projects through the rest of this term and going to the beginning of the spring term.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Ross. And sorry I can't see you, but that's great. Thanks very much for that information.
Thanks, Pam. Dan.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And thanks, Ross. Can you see me now? Yeah, perfect. So yeah, the report's brilliant. I mean, it's nice to see a lot of the issues are going to be covered. But I would like to know what kind of, the parent care forum will be a big help. But what do we have in place for to pick up the issues that aren't really the fault of the council? So some of the issues with schools' communications, if they were slightly better and they spoke to other agencies, like healthcare providers or parents, some of the issues we have got wouldn't be half as bad, or they could be helped a bit more. It's not just Warwickshire, it happened in Coventry as well. I've seen, you know, the difference from one school where someone's got a plan, and they've got simple things, but every single teacher is on board, every person involved in the child is aware of everything, and it's all logged. And anything that happens from, you know, an argument in the playground or something's happened at home, every single person is aware. And the information is available on an easy-to-read system. Where you look at another school, a child with similar circumstances, and, you know, they seem to just be missing all sorts of information, things will happen, and it's one teacher where nobody hasn't told someone else. And that happens in Warwickshire as well, there's a couple of schools where they've had things like that. And obviously, no matter what we put in place, if the schools aren't on board and aren't getting information and giving it back to the people that need that, then we're going to still have issues. That's really all I'm concerned about, or how we deal with that. There is a school, I've dealt with recently, up in Nanteton, North Warwickshire, where the parents have met with a SEND teacher, SEND coordinator, spoke about the child, healthcare providers, doctors wrote to the school, didn't get a reply, they called the school, left information. But the coordinator took the information, was going to speak to teachers and different people involved with the child. And then the teacher, six months later, wasn't aware of any issues. And, you know, so the problem could have been solved, there could have been things in place to help this child make sure they're getting the best out they can at school. But, you know, the really basic things, the fundamental things a school should have done, haven't been done. So what can we do really to stop that and to give, I don't know, whether it's parents or healthcare providers or other people involved in childcare as well, that the person to go to, if they go to the school that many times, they're told this is happening, but it's not, how can we be sure it is happening? And given the assurance that, you know, there is someone listening, and it can be dealt with if the SEND coordinators can't do that.
Thanks. So I think there's at least a couple of things to respond to that. The first one, I think, is about the culture, and the second one about how we work with support services are the two things I probably want to focus on. In terms of, I think, the reason why we're making such a thing of the changing the conversation, you saw at the end of the presentation to say, one of the things we want to do is to have the conversation about how do we support the child, where they are at the moment, in their current setting, what do we need to do, and how do we celebrate their achievements? And I think, again, the external review from Empower that we looked at, really looked at our kind of behaviours in the system. And one of the things it picked up was actually, very quickly, we got to this conversation about, you know, in a mainstream school, we're finding it difficult to support the needs of this child, we must need another placement. Very quickly, that conversation happens with the parent. By the time kind of other professionals are brought in, that's kind of seen as the direction of travel, whether that's appropriate or not. And so we're kind of, and as a result, those relationships in the schools are kind of diminishing, if you like, some of the examples that you've given. And the solution is seen as something that happens elsewhere. One of the things we'll try to change culturally, which should kind of, if it works well, which will feed on itself, and there'll be plenty of challenges along the way as well, but is to empower a number of our services and from the top to say, okay, we're not able to meet the needs at the moment, how do we do that where they are? And that's, it's so kind of crucial that we do that, that it's difficult for some of our services, particularly where they're traded services, and we'll work through that, that some of our teachers who are trying to have a fear that if they provide that critical challenge, actually, will they be dropped as a traded service, and the school buys from somewhere else, which kind of goes along with that. So we need to, we need to support our staff in making that change, and changing around what the conversation's about. So in those schools, once you begin to say, okay, how do we make a difference? What resources do we need? The local authority have said that they will increase top-ups to mainstream schools if we can meet the needs. So how would that look? Once you get that, then that should then feed off, and how else can we improve how we're working here? It also links with governor training as well. And if my colleague Jane Carter was here, she'd say the amount of times that actually, when she's delivered government training, the governor's gone out kind of passionate, that they've understood the issues more and started asking questions of their schools, like how are we inclusive, how are we dealing with, how are we using our SEND budget as well? We've had really positive feedback. And this is another thing which you might make kind of, we could look at mandatory training, it'll be in the mix, but a number of schools have given really positive feedback where they've said, we haven't got the resources to meet the needs of this child. We've actually said, can we do an audit of how you've used your SEN notional budget, made some recommendations of how it can be used. And it's actually been a very positive exercise. That won't be the case in every school. And I know a number of our smaller schools really do struggle when they have a high proportion of children in the EHCP plans. But in a number of cases, that can work. So part is the culture and the conversations that we have, and I don't know, I'm quite aware that Dwayne as well had a conversation with a headteacher, very bluntly, kind of just last week, where she was asked about, she was asked straight out, how could a child be moved to a different school? And she said, why would you want to do that? Let's have a conversation about how you can support them in their current school. And that's got to kind of ripple down through all of our services. But then, as I said earlier, school-to-school as well. I think the other thing I mentioned was about support services as well. SEND shouldn't operate in a bubble. It does link with our health services, with our RISE service, with our early help services. And in terms of those other projects, whilst they're not in the initial ones, you'll see, for example, kind of the parenting plan as a project working with early help. We continue to, through our SEND partnership, to work with the RISE team and with others. And again, it's making sure that all professionals are on board with that, all professionals saying, what are we doing in the And again, it's making sure that all professionals are on board with that, all professionals saying, what are we doing in the setting to make this work? Again, later on, on the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, we hear a little bit about some of the mental health work in schools, which clearly overlaps with this agenda, social, emotional, mental health needs, some of the biggest needs that we've seen come through in the last few years. So that is about how we work together. But again, how do we work together in a culture of saying, how do we provide support in the setting where the child is?
Thank you. Am I allowed to come back to that, Chair, or?
Of course.
Yeah, thanks, Ross. So I do agree on a lot of the points, but some of the issues you mentioned at the end about send and rise working together. There are cases of rise, whether it's the by letter or psychiatrist calling school, whether the school haven't even returned calls, haven't come back to emails or letters. There are issues with that. And, you know, all of you've promised a call back and that's it, it's never been followed up. But some of the other issues aren't as, not necessarily children on EHC or actual care plans. It's just some of the, you know, a child, say they've got autism or you've got on the spectrum somehow, but they're in school, the mainstream school. Not a great deal of issues, but there are some things. And, you know, you've got another child with the same problem, but one of them's quite boisterous or causing disruption in the class. So the issue is with these children, if one of them's disrupting the class or causing a lot of problems, then he's obviously, people are aware of him. They'll deal with that child. But the one that goes unnoticed and sits there and doesn't necessarily get the extra help they need, but the school have been told and they're not getting support and, you know, they might not necessarily be causing problems or need a great deal of help. Or, and if next, just a teacher being aware and, you know, checking on them or making sure they have understood something and just helping these children that might fall behind or might go unnoticed because they've got an issue that we can help. And they don't need a great deal of help, but we just know about them. So many children with ADHD. So I've worked a lot on that as well. And I've known a few children with cases that we could talk about privately. But, you know, there's, again, two children in the class. One is, one might throw something around and kick off and you've got teaching assistants and stuff to calm them down, take them away. And another child's got the same issue, but is more introverted or stuck there, you know, in a world of their own and they're not kicking off and causing issues. But they're not getting the help they need to progress or to reach their potential because of the issues, even though the school are sometimes aware. But it's not just about resources. It's just about communications a lot of the time. If the coordinator, the send coordinators, wherever a child entails the teacher, on teaching assistance and tells everyone. It could be a case of, you know, the child that's fidgeting and wants to run around and cause problems, getting them to get up as they do in some schools and, you know, be the person that helps, hand things out to get their energy around and to give that child a purpose to do something. And that is, you know, it's not cost us any more money. It's just making some teachers aware of issues that we can sort out really, really easily. And you mentioned the governor training, which is brilliant. And it's good to see when we do get the governor training together, we get all the schools and so many people involved. And they can share ideas. That's perfect. But would we do something or do we do something for teachers or heads where schools across the county or in certain areas get together and share, you know, share their things they've done and things they've tried and what works? Because some of these are the things we don't need to increase our budget for. And we don't need to put loads of money into it. We just need to share ideas between people and make them aware of some of the issues that they might not notice. You know, not everyone with ADHD is going to dive around and be causing problems. Some of them will sit there and they'll just be falling behind. So that's more of the issues I'd like to ask about if we can.
Yes, so, I mean, you're right in terms of, you know, we often focus on the children with, you know, we have four and a half thousand children, nought to twenty five with EHC plans. We have another 10,000 children roughly with SEN support needs. And this programme is looking to support them as well through, you know, one of the early projects as well around panels includes new guidance, saying what we expect schools to do and how they should join up with other services as well. I mean, the truth is, the local authorities don't have the capacity to intervene in each individual case. There'll be some cases which we do intervene in. What we can do as a local authority is to kind of set the tone. And what we're seeking to do through this is to set a tone, to say the importance of this agenda. The new inspection framework that they have produced as well, now compared to the one kind of two years ago, also really kind of raises the bar in terms of what a school's doing to support vulnerable children and children with additional needs. And that helps to kind of set the tone as well. So if we can kind of continue to set the tone, hopefully, we won't need to be involved in a number of those cases because actually the motivation and the expectation will have changed into what schools are expected to. Schools are, in some cases, you can see this, the schools doing this on top of their day job. But actually, I think as Margaret and others, if you make it, it's part of the day job, it's part of what we do. And that's what we, you know, we see that in a number of our settings as well. In our most inclusive schools, that's what we see. It's not, it's just include, you know, very small things. I'm not a specialist teacher myself by background, but very small things. And I've been on some of the training as well. And when you see that work in the classroom, just saying, this is where we are going through the day, really helps some of our children with autism, just kind of planning out the day. It gives a structure. They know where we're going. But actually, it helps the whole class. It's often said, you know, it's often said, if it's beneficial for children with send, it could be beneficial for the whole class. That we can help through this programme, set the tone. We can get there going through all the conversations that we have with, for our own staff. But in terms of that school to school support as well. So that's what we're seeking to do. Again, that won't change overnight, but that's the direction for us to go in.
Okay. Corin, and then we'll wrap up.
Yeah, just one last additional question really, as I know you sort of mentioned the parent care forum. But have we got some sort of check system that can make sure if the child is happy with the provision that's put in place for them? I mean, as Dan said, sometimes it can be something really simple. I heard a story recently about a young boy at a school in Aneton who had got problems sitting still. And what the school ended up doing was purchasing a special stool that meant he could, because he was rocking on his chair all the time and obviously causing disruptions to the children. They were a bit worried that he was going to injure himself. So they purchased a stool that allowed him to do that safely and therefore it was less disruptive for the rest of the class. And the young boy, you know, obviously fulfilled his need to be, I guess, fidget around really. But have we got some sort of check system? We've obviously, you know, we've got the heads meetings and things. And we have got the parent care forum. Obviously, we don't know whether how many parents actually sign up to that. And how do we check whether the young people are actually happy with the provision that's put in place for them? Is there any way we can do that?
Yeah, and just as I think Christine Lernerhan or Dame Christine Lernerhan spoke from the Cowsor Ditterby Children at the Heads Conference last week. She used a similar example actually of a young person who was excluded for not making eye contact and really challenged our heads about it. So, you know, these are fairly simple things that actually we can address quite easily. In terms of, if I speak a bit on both parents and young people in terms of involving them, the parent care forum, we are setting up essentially a new parent care forum, but there'll be elections to a new committee. And we have events happening in November to recruit new parents. We would like, we'd like to make sure we have a real kind of full representation across different types of parents. SEN support, EHC plans, mainstream schools, secondary schools, special schools, post sixteen. So we've worked with our kind of outgoing parent care forum. We've done a fabulous job. And they've been committed over a number of years and have really worked hard to represent parents. But we do feel it's time to change in terms of kind of a new season and bring you on board, new parents. Just to reflect the breadth of needs and age groups within our children, young people with send. In terms of involving young people in particular, there are mechanisms for those with EHC plans in terms of their view coming into the EHC plan as part of what we call the family conversation. At the annual review, where it's appropriate, we are, particularly as they get older, we ask for their views. This should be part of our ongoing kind of day to day practice as well. If I spoke about Zoe Harwood's nought to five team, she would tell you that even in those early ages, you could, even when children aren't able to verbalise some of what they want to communicate, they can show the choices that they want to make, by which toy they pick up and so forth. So we, through our normal kind of day to day practice, that is what we should be doing, what we should be encouraging. I guess from a very much a project point of view, we have, and this is something which the task and finish group, you know, can happily look into. We've set out project by project. How do we want to involve parents in this project? How do we want to involve young people in this project? And generally, we've tried to go to young people where they are. So when we've been looking at independent travel training, earlier this year, we did a focus group for some feedback on independent travel training with a group of five young people who'd all been travel trained. And we said, what was good about that for you? Or wasn't so good? And you leave very kind of open questions. And it's always really refreshing to read. It brings you back to where you are. And, you know, that actually, on the travel training one, just as an example, those young people spoke far less about skills. You know, I've learnt this skill or that skill. They just said, I can meet my friends at the weekend. And that's what they were really chuffed about. So it kind of, it brings you back. So we've gone through project by project. And I guess the examples that I use is at one end of the spectrum, you've got us changing our financial systems. I don't expect to involve parents and young people in that because, you know, for me, that's a back office system and they don't really need to know about that. When we're doing service reviews, we need parents and carers of young people who have used that service. We want to hear from the young people themselves who have used their service. What's their journey been like? How do they feel when supported by that service? What happened prior to them being supported by that service? And you generally open question, what was good about it? What was bad about it? So we will involve on a project by project basis. As I say, we can go through on the task and finish group. But it should be part of our day to day practice as well. And I think sometimes we see excellent practice of that. I mentioned the nought to five. Sometimes I'm sure we can improve on that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ross. There is a recommendation on the paper. It's woolly, I'm afraid. I think there were some important points that were raised, assimilation into mainstream settings, some issues there, communication between the schools, other agencies and parents. Outcomes, I think, is absolutely key and how we're going to quantify and monitor that. The depth and scope, regularity of the data that comes to this committee and to members more broadly. But it all feeds back into the task and finish group, I think. And the terms of reference have been sent to all committee members. So please do go back to Helen and to Ian, who sent them out with your thoughts, so we can get that off the ground as soon as possible. But I'm assuming that everyone's happy with the recommendation there on the paper. And if so, we'll move on. Okay. Thank you, Ross. On to item five, which is the School Budget Deficit Report and to Helen Redican. Apologies if I've mispronounced your surname. Do correct me.
No, that's right, Youssef. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. You've got a copy of the paper, which is based on the end of the summer term finance reports that are undertaken in schools. It shares with you the current deficit budgets or the projected deficit budgets of schools, which are 5% or more. As of the end of the summer term, we've got 12 schools that predicted a deficit, which is a reduction from 14 in the spring term. We work with the schools on a challenge and support basis through sustainability action groups. Those are groups of officers from the relevant services. And it's about joining up, working with the school. They are chaired by school improvement rather than finance. The purpose of that is to ensure that we are focusing on the provision for children and not purely the finances. And it is about that shared understanding of each school's context. We're seeing an increasing benefit in that way of working. And we have got evidence now of greater, longer term savings from working with schools early. And we have had a reactive approach initially, and we are getting more towards a proactive approach. The report identifies the fact that the impact of COVID is still yet to be quantified. We're hoping when you receive an autumn term report, it should give a better picture. And schools are receiving COVID catch up premium, which is the equivalent of £80 per pupil. That isn't added into the school's baseline budget as it is for 2020, 2021 only. And we are monitoring that separately to ensure that schools can identify where the funding is being spent. The report also identifies challenges for smaller schools. And we're seeing an increasing number of smaller schools with deficit budgets. We've got 14 schools that are identified under the ESFA definition as being a rural school, a small school, that's 13 primary and one secondary. Those schools are entitled to sparsity funding. However, we've just put consultation out on Friday to change the allocation of funding and increase the number of schools. So we've got an additional 30 schools that we would consider smaller schools. And we're asking, it will then go to Schools Forum around a recommendation to allocate all of those schools and amount of funding. In addition, we're in the process of developing a smaller school strategy. The ESFA criteria at the moment is very much on distance of smaller schools to another school. So it's the rurality of them. And when you look at that across Warwickshire, we've got a couple of schools that if they were a few feet further the other way, would benefit. So that smaller school strategy will come to you as soon as it has been shaped up. Other risks identified in the report around the impact of pay awards on school budgets. And again, we're still uncertain as to how that will be coming out on individual school budgets. So again, the autumn term report will pick that up, we hope. Maintain nursery schools are a concern for us, which you are aware of. And I know a separate report around early years is being shared. And, but we do have our maintained nursery schools that are all in a deficit budget position, apart from one. Ongoing work needs to take place. And the work that we're doing through the SAG meetings and the Strategic Sustainability Action Group, which Ian Bud shares, is about how we're changing our practice internally as well. So the report you've got, I know it was shared a while ago, so I'm open for any questions from you.
Thank you, Helen. Margaret?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yeah, this is a really interesting report, but I found myself trying to separate quite a few things out here. I'm not clear why schools budgets per se should have been impacted by COVID. I mean, they were closed for quite a while, so one would have thought they'd have saved a bit of money. Now, I do understand that there's a catch up to do and that they may have to put resources into children to bring them up to where they should be. But then they have got the catch up fund, which, as you say, is only for one year. So I would be really interested to see how these deficits compare with previous years and whether they are significantly more than they normally are in effect. Now, having said that, there are obviously issues with funding which are more general. And that's what I'm trying to separate. Is there a COVID influence here? Or have we got an ongoing problem with school funding? And I know there is an attempt to bring in this national funding formula, which I know in schools I'm involved with will be And I know there is an attempt to bring in this national funding formula, which I know in schools I'm involved with will be very welcome. So that will help in some cases. But we, there are issues, of course, with small schools, as you've said. And I would really welcome a paper on small schools to see what the real issues are. And is there anything that we can do about it? So that's where my questions are really. And just one more about the maintained nurseries. I'm really, really concerned about what's said in the paper about them. And I was interested to see, I'm pleased that they have qualified teachers and a qualified head teacher. It says they must have. I'm wondering who it is who says they must have. And that person who says they must have, will they please put the funding in to provide that? So a bit more on that would be helpful so I could understand it. So I suppose what I'm saying is, first of all, if it's COVID, why is it? And therefore it's a one off, which we'll need to deal with. If it's an ongoing funding problem, then what is Warwickshire County Council's responsibility for this? Have we got a financial liability here? Or is it just about supporting schools to get their budget sorted out? And what happens if their budget isn't sorted out? So that's the general issue. And then small schools and maintained nurseries, I've got particular concerns about. Thank you.
And thank you, Margaret. Yes, you're right. In terms of COVID, we don't know. From previous work, schools have got ongoing issues with funding. So that's, that's there. That's the case. There is the ongoing funding that's affecting schools. And we know nationally, it hasn't been particularly clear. The COVID part, we hope to give you a clearer picture after the autumn term visits are made. There are additional costs that schools have had to incur and they could be around supply costs. They could be around PPE equipment, that side of things. But I think we need to park that bit until we understand it more because you're right, we don't. And in terms of recovery curriculum, the costs should be covered through the additional premium that governments are funding. The report isn't that much different than the one that we've shared. We do a report on a termly basis. It is always late, if you like, because we have to wait until all the termly visits have been carried out to get a better picture. And then we work with Wes Finance on those schools. I will say, as soon as you get the, the costs coming in, they will change because schools obviously are working continually day by day. But going back to clarify your points, national funding is still an issue for schools. I think having conversations with the DFE as well. It's not going to get any easier very quickly. And the COVID bit will keep and give you a better picture at the end of the autumn term. The smaller schools, yes, we appreciate that. And we will again give you a paper around smaller schools. And the maintained nurseries, the part in the report is taken from the the nursery schools report, the early years report that has been shared previously, I think. It is DFE that says they need to be qualified teachers. It is national. I don't know if Kim wants to add anything on the early years because I know Kim's been working with the early years team around that.
Hello, Helen. Thank you for inviting me in. Thank you. No, there really isn't very much to add to the points you're making. It's certainly a national issue that is receiving support and lobbying across the country. All up tier authorities are looking at it. But locally, it is the case that maintained nursery schools are DFE registered. They are registered as a school, but they are receiving differentiated support, both financially and in relation to COVID support, in terms of the budget and in terms of COVID support. For example, they were not listed in terms of being eligible for claiming COVID support despite having to spend in that way, as other schools have been. So there is an additional pressure on the maintained nursery schools. We also have to remember that maintained nursery schools, as well as being, excuse me, registered DFE schools, they are also required to be able to provide special educational needs support up to a complex level and are very much part of the SEND scenarios that we have been discussing on the naught to 25 continuum. But no, I think you've made the main points. And I think maintained nursery schools, as well as small schools, is an area that could come back to the committee for further attention.
Okay, thank you both. Corinne.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to follow up, well, say the same things as Margaret with regard to the maintained nursery schools. And thanks, Kim, for that update because it's really worrying that these nursery schools are potentially not going to continue. And I think, you know, we all know that they're in the most deprived areas and we've just been talking about the SEND. And those schools are the ones, those nursery schools are the ones that are getting the majority of those children, you know, through their books and identifying those needs first. So that really concerns me that, I mean, they haven't had, as you say, they've not had any COVID-19 catch up at all. And I would, it would be good to get this back as perhaps a single item on the agenda at some point in the future. But equally, that we continue to lobby government for funding for this. Because for me, it would be something that would be criminal to see it go. And once that provision is gone, it's not something that's easy to get back. Just your observations really.
Thanks, Kim. Would you like to come in?
Thank you, Chair. Just one other further point. Just to say, and it's picking up a point that Ross calls made earlier about are the schools ready for the children? And are the children ready for school? And the early years sector does so very much to prepare children to begin school aged four through five into reception. And the investment in that area is critical. The maintained nursery schools are very much part of the scaffolding and the structuring in Warwickshire for providing the early year support across the piece, across the sector. And work very closely with the PVI, private and voluntary and independent sector to do that. So they have a key role. And the integrated early year strategy, which is, has been formulated and is about to be introduced alongside the other strategies as part of the Education Change Programme. It's, the maintained schools are a really important part of that. And will provide the structuring for the therapeutic hubs, the outreach system across the county. And they provide as well the quality of leadership and standards that has to be achieved in schools to help drive the work in that sector. So they have a really important role.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from members? Colin, is there anything you want to add?
Only really to, I fully support what officers have been saying. And I sympathise with just about everything that elected members have been saying. I've always carried a particular torch for the maintained nursery. It's a pity that governments are so slow to recognise that and provide the additional support those schools need. Finding a wider usefulness, now that sounds, let me try and explain that. What are you, almost like centres of excellence for early years, for maintained nurseries? And seeing if we can find additional resources that way. But they are, as Corinne says, in exactly the right spots to be able to deal with some of the more deprived areas within the borough, district, county even. And, you tell it's a Monday morning, county even. And they need to be supported because they are carrying out critical work for us in being able to look after our more vulnerable early years children. And in spotting and where possible, addressing some of the needs that they have at an early stage. Because if children progress into mainstream schools with some of their problems, they'll carry them through with them for the rest of their school career. So there's a real, I can't stress too strongly how much I believe in the maintained nurseries. And I need to try and support them within the county. And I think I speak on behalf of my cabinet colleagues in saying that.
Thank you, Colin. Margaret.
Sorry, can I just clear up the point about Warwickshire County Council's liability in this area? With our maintained schools, do we have a liability if they have a deficit?
In terms of, do you want me to answer that, Youssef?
Sure.
In terms of, it's the county councils for maintained schools. It's our responsibility to ensure that schools don't have deficit budgets. And it's working with the governors to ensure that's the case. However, in legislation, it does say that the local authority cannot pay off deficit budgets. But it's about working with the school to ensure that they are balanced.
Does that answer your question, Margaret?
It does, and it's slightly reassuring. But then, of course, what happens if at the end of the year, there is a deficit? Which I'm sure everybody works to make sure there isn't, but I know that there are at times. How's it paid off?
Yeah, there are. And the local authority will accept a recovery plan. So it's about working with schools on that recovery, how they get back and what decisions need to be made or what actions taken to ensure that they can get back within the three years.
Do we lend them money to cover the deficit?
No, again, we can't loan money to schools. There are cash advances where it's needed that are given, but not as a loan. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more questions from members for Helen or indeed for Kim? If not, then there are a couple of points that have been raised during the discussions. So over to members really to shout. The paper on smaller schools, a standalone paper, perhaps ask for one as a briefing note before perhaps coming to committee as well as maintained nurseries. So both of those two issues, if we can have standalone papers on briefing notes on those. And then members can decide whether to bring those to committee for full agenda items. The impact of COVID at the end of the autumn term. And Dominic made a good point on the chat, if you saw that, regarding the the cost of establishing IT and virtual teaching provision for schools over the pandemic when they were closed. So it'd be interesting to know what costs were incurred by schools there. So yeah, the data really, whatever data becomes available to analyse that. And then Margaret's point at the start of the discussions regarding comparing that to earlier, other years, early years. So if we can have all of that, and perhaps Helen, you can add that into the recommendations? In a succinct way? Yep.
Will do. Will do.
Yeah, okay. If there are no further questions, then thank you, Helen. Thank you, Kim. And we'll move on to item six, which is the work programme. Any members, any comments at all? If not, and Helen, I'm sorry, Geoff, do come in.
Hi, Youssef. Thanks. Can I just remind people that we really ought to be keeping an eye on the performance of the Midland Academy Trust schools in Nanteton? I mean, this is Colin's area really, but I think the results, the confirmed GCSE results are usually available to us after Christmas, aren't they? So we might want to take a look at those then.
Yeah. And Helen, remind me, have we had the paper yet? We did ask for an update, a briefing note.
I think that did get sent round last week. I think it was when I was on leave, so I will check. But I'm pretty sure it did get circulated.
On the Nanteton mat? Sure. All right, I'll have a look. That's Mr. Okay. Margaret, then, Dan.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I seem to remember we talked about this last time. But the education sufficiency strategy, which Cabinet has decided to just hold for a moment because they want to do consultation. I'm just wondering where we as an overview and scrutiny committee fit into that consultation. Because I think it ought to be part of our programme at some point. I'm not sure where the best point would be. Colin might know.
Colin or Geoff?
As far as I'm aware, I think I've seen in my diary somewhere sort of a presentation on the school sufficiency that's being set up for all elected members. I'll bear correction on that, but I think that was what I'd asked for. And that is what I think is going to be provided. I think there's also an issue that it isn't just county councillors that have a concern over school sufficiency. District and borough councillors have concerns over school sufficiency. And I have asked if we can get some teams meeting set up that might include district and borough councillors so they can try and ask specific questions on the schools in their area and hopefully get some reassurance that we have a handle on things in the light of housing developments that are impending.
Okay, we need to get some clarification as to how long the consultation period is running and then slot something in. If it requires an additional meeting, again, then we'll have to do it because November is full. And we have an additional item for the November meeting, which is the Warwickshire Challenge. So it's bursting at the seams for November, but the meeting, we haven't got a meeting till February after that. So there is potential to slot something in. And we will. Geoff? If your hand is still up.
Sorry, that's a legacy old hand.
Okay. Dan.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just back on what Geoff said about the Academy Trust. So if we could bring it back on to that, but also, again, I don't really know what the answer is because it's the same every year now. It's an ongoing issue. But soon September hit, we had people contacting us. Sure, Margaret knows as well from being in the area of two of the schools. But I've had parents contact me to ask, you know, what can I be forced to go there? And what else can they do? And they've applied to different schools across Nanteton. And some further up in North Warwickshire, but they've, they live, the closest school is in walking distance and it's a Midland Academy Trust school. Some parents are happy to go there, their children got on there. And that's the issue. They're quite happy because the children are okay and that's it. But a lot of parents are still concerned about it and right to. And, you know, where do we draw the line? Are we just gonna, if a child applies to another school and there's a space and they get there? But what if they haven't applied for, you know, some of them have applied for three schools or none of them are the nearest to them, which are two of the Academy Trust schools? So it's what can we really do? That's my question. Obviously, we want to look at the results and see hopefully some improvements. And we can give assurances to parents and residents with younger children that would be going there in a couple of years to learn, you know, weird with things and we're doing what we can do. But obviously, we are restricted. So I think it's for me, it's what information can we have to give to parents? Obviously, if we're asking our personal opinions of the school and we tell them, you know, what we've worked towards and how of our frustrations that we haven't seen these big improvements and we've just seen change. That's not giving anyone the confidence to send their children there. They say some are happy and they'll go there because it's the easiest and because they've got friends there or just because they get on. or just because they get on and the, the children have gone there and seem happy. But there are a lot of children that, that struggle, don't get the results they could have got. A lot of parents that just don't want to send their schoolchildren there. Yeah. And we've got children that two, three, four years away, where parents are still concerned about that. And obviously more people moving to, to Hartstail, to Myra, Galley Common. We're, we're all surrounded by two of these schools. So it's really what, what can we do and what can we keep doing apart from looking at results and raising concerns?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an ongoing problem. We've been looking at this for years now. And every, every year, promises are made and promises aren't kept by, by that trust. And we are limited in, in what we can do as a local authority, given it's an academy trust. But we do need to put it back on the formal agenda. We need to read through that briefing note. It came out last week. I apologise to members. I, I missed it if, if we've got it. And have a look at that and put it back on the agenda formally. And perhaps when we have the results from this is exams, we can, we can look at holding a virtual meeting with the governors again and the head, the heads at the schools. Kim, did you want to come in?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to say that it was about two weeks ago, I was asked to contact the Midland Academy Trust to obtain an update for yourselves, which I did. And at the same time, we had a regular keeping in touch meeting that Ian Bud holds with Academy Trusts. So we brought the two together. And the paper, which has come to you, is a product of that. What I can flag up at this point is that there have been leadership changes and improvements made in, in the leadership of the trust, which is reported in the paper that's come to you. And there's a full set of performance data in there, unvalidated. And as Geoff Morgan said, it's not until just the other side of Christmas that we'll be able to validate it. But we know that 95% of results remain as they are when they get to the validation stage. So they're fairly secure. What we can do is for a further presentation to you is develop an analysis of the, of the, sorry, develop an analysis of the results for you. And if you wanted to invite the CEO to the meeting, Simon Lomax, to, to, to run through improvements and improvements are set out in the paper, then we can arrange that as well.
Okay, thanks, Kim. On the topic ahead then, with the results significantly improved this year?
There is a level of improvement, but it needs to go further.
Okay. Geoff?
All, all, all I'd say on that is, and this is terribly cynical of me, I know. We need to remember, we need to remember that these will have been marked by teachers.
Yeah, there's a big caveat there, isn't there? Okay. Okay, well, we, we'll get it back on. If we can have that, Kim, if we can have that paper with the analysis of the results, then we will, we will put it back on the formal agenda if members do agree. And we'll invite Simon, potentially Marion as well, for that meeting. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Helen?
Hi, sorry. Do you want to schedule that for the February meeting? At the moment, we've just got one item, so we could put that on ahead. It's the February.
Yep.
Okay.
Seems logical to me unless anyone particularly thinks we should have that in January and have an additional meeting. February might give us enough time for those results to be in and analysed and diaries set up. Okay, let's go for February then, Helen.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So all that's remaining is the date of the next meeting, which is the 17th of November. It's on Teams again at 10 o'clock. Thank you all for attending this morning.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye.